That we're in the traditional territory of the psychist first nation. That's on their land that we live, working with each state. You see in there the calls to action, they're on justice and kind of, you know, really focused around, you know, having, you know, sufficient funding to, to work with Aboriginal offenders and respond to underlying causes and stuff like that. Um, you know, specifically certainly in the alcohol spectrum disorder. So the thing is, is I don't know if there's anybody that has any comments that they would like to speak on these five at all. But I find it interesting just reading each time we go through them and just give a little more understanding of what, what we're really facing. I think when the forty-four calls to action came out, they just sounded like a batch of things, but it's worthwhile.
Yes, I think some of these calls for actions that are included in here are also things that we can use in when we're talking, working on getting our foundry and having, we can, we can use together with our, with our neighbors talk about how these things can be impacted by that type of positive influence in the community for all of us as a team together. So I think it's relevant. Maybe some of the calls to action in our proposals.
Just a reminder tomorrow is, I think it starts here at ten, doesn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, and so. Encourage everybody to be here. You'll be here at ten tomorrow with Ken, won't you? Mental thing that, but they've promised me that I'll be out here according to ten, so.
Well.
Good luck.
Yeah. Okay, um, thanks. Okay, then to the agenda, kind of a motion to adopt the agenda and I'll, I'll talk about that. I'll say probably three point four.
I'll second that.
Labor, Kerry, Kerry. We have three committees, just did each one tab, but was there, um, your meeting, you want to mention anything about the environment?
Uh, not, I believe we've got another meeting coming up on, on Friday. This, we talked a bit about having some public discussion around flood mitigation. Uh, we're still working on the solid fuel burning control by law. Purple Air, we have four monitors up to working right now. So hopefully we'll have Public Works installing more in the, the near future to get that network built out. Working well before we get into the, the port air season. Any questions on anything in there?
Um, I just noticed, I think I mentioned, you know, Smithers, Funky Valley, Air, they've got a whole bunch of them out there. And, uh, yeah, I think, I think those purple monitors, they're doing, they're gaining information for four hundred bucks. What, you know, probably the previous lifetimes was, was thousands of dollars per, per monitor. I know they don't last long.
I was gonna say they, they've got kind of a two-year lifespan. You have to either buy new or, or actually somebody in Smithers is rebuilding them out of smoke detector parts. So hopefully if he's getting pretty proficient in two years, we might be able to go that way, right?
But, uh. Yeah, he says it, it's working well.
Yeah.
You know, so that, and then the only other thing on the environment is, um, I've talked to staff and just, there might be an opportunity to do curbside recycling. You know, if we can get enough people on the list to do that. So I think that's something I've been on, working on.
That would be huge.
Yeah. Closing committee.
Um, okay, so we just had a meeting last week and so this is, this is a little bit, you know, dated, yeah, it was last month. But we did talk about the blower door testing and we were looking at, you know, would it be viable for Vanderhoof to have its own door, door test? And so Ethan reached out to terrorists which have their own and he, or have their own. And, um, you know, we kind of concluded that maybe we would be talking to the regional district about that. And then we also wanted to make sure that the environmental testing piece not going to be holding folks up in town when it, you know, when the building was happening. So we're looking a little bit more into that as well. But that'll be coming up in a, in a future. Anyway, our request. Um, we also talked about, uh, really the need to push, um, really look at having infrastructure, really having a good understanding of infrastructure. And perhaps putting some, what we have to do for infrastructure in this community, some solid steps and start stepping forward in that area. Because it's, I was saying, you know, kind of, we've kind of concluded that hope can't happen if the infrastructure's not there. So that's the piece that really needs to be addressed. And again, we'll be coming forward to counsel some of our requests around that. And then, uh, we're also interested in our next meeting, uh, again, trying to get a hold of the appraisal institute. Um, I think Ethan's got someone lined up to, as a delegate to come to our next meeting, just to get a really good understanding of that. And then also someone from the council in Rebelstoke, uh, the staff actually, person in Rebelstoke to talk to us about their thing with that society to get affordable. That must come from young things, isn't this something?
No?
No?
Good. Um, today we did the grand opening of Parkview.
Oh, right.
And so, yeah.
Good.
So it was pretty exciting. It was neat to see people there from Ontario, was it, the three guys? You know, because the technology was something brand new that they put in there as far as the lighting and things like that. So, so, uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's pretty exciting to, to be up and going and, and, uh, and to be finally there. And there's lots of people upstairs in the two floors. And they'll start slowly bringing people into the main, main floor.
It's so exciting to see it come from conception to, like, just an idea to.
It was, it was nice to have Kathy Elrich and Colleen Nieser. No, good. Uh, tourism.
I think we've had a meeting since this as well. This one focused a lot on what we have online and how we can update that and stuff. Actually gives some, some good suggestions and things that we look at. Uh, we're looking at combining that into a bit of a presentation back to council to say, these are things that we need to be able to, to progress in. Um, also some pieces with how the chamber could be involved a little bit different in supporting the tourism sector and how maybe their app that they have could be expanded beyond just, it was posed to them that maybe it could be beyond just council personally, chamber members. Because right now it's a segment of a population, but that's another discussion. Um, the last meeting, we did talk more about, um, simple things, but it could be pretty impactful. And that's, you know, signage, um, different types of signage, whether it's even the old fashioned things that you see, you know, other communities talking about coming to Vanderhoof, pictures of the surgeon on the side of the highway, all those kinds of things. Who do we talk to? Which companies are involved in that? Not that we want to add to the side pollution, but, you know, we have communities from all around us advertising on our outskirts of our community. We don't have anything of any substance really talking about what's, what's really. And, you know, more of the things that we do have, like our, our playground right in the middle of town and also people as they're coming to in their vehicles. How does that, the online presence coordinate with things that are in their community and attached to that? So where to stop and when to stop. And just the last time we didn't have enough for a quorum, but we did spend, we stayed for an hour anyway and just brainstorm and work this out for a bit, then we'll follow up with other than next. And we're gonna run into some problems as we end the summer here trying to get forms for it all.
Okay, uh, the other, just a thing on health. The doctors would like to sit down and talk to us, not only about doctors. And we have, we have thirteen doctors. The problem is, is fourteen changes. So it's gonna be some challenges plus the nursing, I guess. An area that we need to work. Um, I think, you know, my sister works in, or lives in Crescent. And, uh, so to me is Crescent has, um, and I heard on C D C this morning, they did a talk, you know, what they were doing for healthcare. They're spending up to eighty thousand dollars a year for recruiting, you know, nurses and doctors in lab. Um, right now we're only short one. Um, we are short some nurses. I'm not sure exactly the number. I don't know if anybody else is sure the number. But not, not over the top, but, um, they would like to talk to us. And so I think that, I think it would be good. If you look at the Cornell Williams Lake, they, they have it as a service that they tax the regional district and municipality one. It would be good to ask Jerry Peterson, because he's got money that he could put in a service as well, you know, to the. I don't know, you know, if, um, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I've asked that we'd have that on our next attraction retention. Moving on that a bit.
I think, as Jerry said, needs to come to the council table soon, right?
Yeah, very soon.
So, I'll tell committee to speak to the table.
Yes. I think it goes back to our priorities. When you think about housing, this, the, the health piece is just, it's, it's right here with it. And we've been focused on housing. We've been talking a lot about that in, in various times during these cycles where we come back and get the information. So we're back in that, that spot again where we realize how fragile it really is in terms of having a maintaining full staff, et cetera, up at the, in our, in our healthcare facility. So to me, I agree with what you and, and council, um, Lou Trey were saying there that I think it needs to, we need to bring them to meet with us right away. We have an attraction retention community, but we also have a lot of funding that's within that. And if that's a priority, we need to find out what they need and how we get there. Because we are not going to get people to come to our community if there isn't healthcare here. So if that's a number one along with, it's one and one, not one A, one B, they're one and one. And I know if I was moving somewhere and I found out they were, you know, low in staff, you know, in their healthcare, why would you go there? So.
So, like, it, like, it's more than a fifteen minute delegation, okay? And it needs to be a part, part. So is it a lunchtime thing or is it? One of the things that's hard for some of the doctors, because we have young kids, is on, you know, at four thirty or five o'clock. Is it something that, that, you know, we can do at lunch? Okay, so like, should we try to set up for Friday lunch? For a reason that we can't do this Friday in here?
You have a environment committee meeting?
So if I could make a suggestion, um, if this is a meeting the council wants to have, um, let, let staff work through the scheduling and kind of coordination of it. Um, we can try and get something together either later this week or early next week. And kind of adjudicate it from there.
Okay, so will you be the contact person?
Um, let me talk with my, with the key scheduling person or organization. Um, make sure they have time, time to take this on and then they'll be the main point of contact.
Okay, is that, I need to get back to Dr. Jansen tomorrow, you know, and just say, you know, okay, this is, is it, this is, you know, they, they would just like to chat with us and, and do it on a regular basis. Maybe once we have the chat, maybe attraction retention could get involved in this as well. You know, you know, but they would like to do it on a regular basis. So that's a priority to us as a community. We did the, you know, the mean two and a half years ago. And so we, you know, and those suggestions, what we came up with, you know, that are priorities are all in that report there, you know, yes.
So this meeting, were you talking about two meetings or one meeting with the doctors to talk about the possibility of a recruiter? Is that, do you want that?
I don't know that's on the list.
Or that was just the, yeah, right.
With us and her.
Oh, I see, right, okay.
And then I think it would be good to have Jerry here, just because he has cash, you know, and access to it. But I think, I think taxpayers outside of Vanderhoof need to come to the table. I actually feel quite strongly that Fraser Lake and fourteen changes. They rely on it, you know.
But at minimum, if we could get Ari up to partner with us and then try to pull the others in, that's, that might be a more difficult sell. Not, not disagreeing, but I think at minimum that we have Mr. Peterson here for sure.
Okay, good, thanks. Okay, finance department, checklist, any questions? See none. Public Works Department, report. Do you want to speak to it?
Sure, through the mayor and council. Um, this is the June twentieth. Public Works update, if there's any questions, we're happy to try to answer them.
Well, go ahead.
Mine was a real simple question. I know we were doing much work in the playgrounds. Is there two or three playgrounds being updated? Is there more than that? I, I don't recall. I know there's two.
So the Vanderhoof playground is completed. That was all together from last year. And also Lighting Park, there's other playground in Furland Park that's getting done this year. It's not being, there's just some operational issues.
You're aware this, that Lighting Park, like, that's not gonna get any better till late August.
Yeah.
Thing about high water, um, the trail from the bridge to the community garden, it has that low spot. It's only about maybe a hundred yards in length. Is it even that much? And like, I think, well, three minutes of gravel and the culvert would, you know, keep it alive still. And then there's also one little part right along, well, right by the horse park on Douglas. If you just go in there with, you know, with a gait or, you know, you know, just build it up, just to leave this. Come around the corner there, it was a bit of a switchback kind of thing. But since, you know, this time of year, get, get close to falling.
So just to the mayor and council, so thanks for bringing that to our attention. And I know you and I talked about this during your meeting. I haven't had a chance to speak with our director of community service about this, but provided that there is budgetary room available, that is something that can be dealt with at the operating level.
Tinto did a whole bunch of lidar work three town last fall, which would give you exactly where you need and how much you need to build up where and when.
Yeah, I just think it, it is a really low, and it seems to hit every, every year. And it's just such a, uh, inexpensive place and it keeps people kind of, oh, they're walking the trail, see, kind of thing. Good, any other?
Just to come on?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
We were talking last while about the, the banners not being visible. I came down, I just looked at them and they're all on the inside of the, above the sidewalk and they're hidden by the trees around them. Maybe walk around and on the other side of that pole versus inside, that would have worked as well.
Just, just a question on the boat launch. What's the ETA on that whole project? What are we looking at there? Looking at design and this year, next year?
So through the mayor and council, the boat launches, the work is with L and M Engineering. And, uh, that's just for the design for this year. Works won't be until the design is completed and brought back to council.
Right now, everything goes well with design. So we pick a design, we're assuming we start next year. That's the assumption right now or, because we don't want to kick that too far down the road.
The other core factor before we consider construction will be making sure that through L and M we have a solid capital cost estimate. Council and can for, as per a release and camera resolution, allocated three hundred fifty thousand dollars towards the construction of boat launch. Um, and other grant vendors will have to come to the table to make that project a reality. So that's the next couple of months after we get the design done, is going to be focused on finding that extra funding.
Just the other thing to throw out there, I assume we would probably look at any construction being in the fall when the river's lowest.
Yeah, for sure.
But if you call for a down, it's gonna be the lowest, smallest of all day too, right?
Are you considering that work to be done?
I've seen N D I spend some money on boat launches in the off state. So I think it would be a good funding source for that, you know, when it comes to tourism, but it brings. I guess now who would be the ones, would, would the L and M engineers that would know what we have to do for permitting, you know, in the river?
Through, so through the mayor and council, yes, the, that is part of the works down the, down the road.
It might be good just to make sure from their report too, that we have an approximate timeline for the construction period. Because that is gonna take out that boat launch for a period of time. It'd be good to let people know that upfront beforehand, right? That, that's the plan and how long we anticipate it going down for. Second groups such as SAR, right, would want to make sure they've arranged a backup location.
Yeah, well, they're not, there's a facility needs access.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, they're building something into when they're doing studies or other pieces there and all of a sudden they have no access, so.
Where would be the closest to that, so, so other than here, if, if this one?
Why would it public? Uh, you could launch at the Old Bayside Ferry Crossing. That's a long way off.
That's a lot.
There are private ones, it could be great. It's more, but it'd be good to have those discussions up there.
That would be great, yeah, I think.
The lagoon access gate that you refer there, is that basically ensure us that we're getting, being paid now on every dump that's made in there?
I don't think we're, I think the gate is completed, that portion of it is, but as far as billing or setting up that way. Fobs have been issued to contractors and staff. That would be that portion of it.
Will that, is that a budgetary thing?
For the lagoon gate project in its entirety?
Yeah, the, the thing is, is the access gate, the like tri gate is installed and completed, okay? And so I guess the concern that we have is that it appears to us that there's a lot of people using our lagoons. Um, and there's a lot of, what I saw was a lot of. You know, you'd see. Are we, are we making sure that we get credit for everything that uses our?
Billings monthly for the lagoon. So far to date, we have collected thirty-five thousand. So people self-report. That's billings to the end of May.
Okay, I guess, I'm just so unclear on this. The other communities, they have, you have to go to get in there and you have to, you know, they know exactly how much sewage you put into the lagoon. So what more has to be done on this access gate to, to get to that point? That we know of what exactly is going on. Because right now we're on the honor system, right? Is that what, right? So, so it is to me is, how can we ensure that we, we're getting, because the, the lagoon seems to be a concern from time to time. You know, whether it's sufficient or not.
Through the mayor and council, the next step would be to look at a, at a wifi system or, uh, like as our CFO has mentioned, they are paying, um, on a annual, a monthly basis, those individuals or contractors have been given a fob and the access code to the lagoon. Um, so that would, that's the process now.
So is, is the next step a budgetary requirement? Do we need to put money in there to get to that next step?
This is the mayor and council, um, off the top of my head, I don't necessarily know the answer. I believe we included in the budget money for software to provide that support. However, that requires confirmation with our documentation. Realistically, the next step is looking at how we now under great, who is getting in and out of the gate with our billing system.
And this is the last question on this. Uh, how can we be sure of what is going into our living? You know, how can we, how do we know, um, where, where the, the effluent is coming from? And what, what, um, chemical makeup that, that effluent is? I've heard that there's people that travel ways to come to our, you know, and, and I just want to understand what, what, you know, why? Why is this happening? Is it because other lagoons are full that they're, that they're coming? Or is it even true? Now, I don't know it's true, but if, if, if they're coming from ways, is there, is there a way that we can be, be sure of what's coming into our lagoon?
Yeah, through the mayor and council, we, one way that we, uh, organizer, contractors, see what they're bringing in, and then also documentation of loads. So we, we lagoon are actually into the cell beside the lagoon. Verifying and confirming through the contractor and they also, whoever dumps in there as a contractor has to have a business license to confirm that they're doing business.
Just regarding lagoons?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead now.
Further to the director of operations, mentioned the fob system. So if I have a fob, it's assigned to me, is that fob tracked to my usage?
I am not a hundred percent sure on that.
My thoughts are if I have a fob, I give it to the mayor to use, because if somebody else is getting around and people are in there that probably shouldn't be in there. But if it's tracked somehow, then all comes back to me as, as a fob holder, I get the billing wrong. Activity that happens in, in that thing. So that's something we should look at, tracking.
I can't look at that, but I do believe I read, I'll get back to you on that.
Just when you're making mention of, of things being brought from, from a distance, does that, you mean outside of our community, outside of, like, some distance? So that's, that's a case, I'm, I'm just concerned because, and again, I don't, I don't know everything about our sewage system, but I would like us to start looking at some kind of policy or limited anything that's coming from outside of us, not only going into our lagoon. We're running at close capacity and we're trying to find ways to expand housing. And we're doing things, and I'm not sure if that has any impact at all. I don't know. So if we can rule out that it has any negative impact, that's fine. But if we are having enough coming from outside of our new But if we are having enough coming from outside of our new facility, why aren't we doing it? Unless it's paying us a lot of money, which I don't think it is, it's not worth it because we're putting our system near any capacity. And I, I, again, I don't know enough about this. But I think it'd be nice for us to find out. I, I just think that's a concern.
Well, general contractors are general contractors and they haul from everywhere, you know.
That's not what we built it for.
So just to quickly, so staff will return with some information about the sewer lagoon system and what exactly this, this can do in terms of tracking usage of our lagoon system. In terms of capacity, uh, that's, the capacity is more related to our discharge limits under our environmental pyramid. Um, and I don't know the implications of, um, this additional sewage being treated through our system and if that's going to be some additional volumes. But that's something that staff can also look into as well.
You see I'm going with that, right? If it has any impact, I'm not sure if the small monetary gain gets worth doing or impacting in person, if we're that close in terms of. We didn't, I don't believe we designed it to do that type of function. It was more for, I believe our community to function as a community, not to bring in others ways from far away.
Yeah, the other aspect that we'll have to look at as staff is, um, the last time we did a sledge survey in the lagoon, um, because that was from us as to the, the amount of solids that we better be entertaining to the lagoon that we had before and look at our cycles for if and when we have one schedule next. All that changes over time, because that'll be the key informer of our sledge capacity.
Yeah, so anyways, yeah, look forward to that report and just what, what, you know, yeah, so that'd be good. Okay, um, thanks. Fire department report. Any questions on that? Do you know if they got their new SCBA equipment yet?
SCBA equipment tender closed in the prior month. Our fire chief has been evaluating the tenders and as, as of this right now, there hasn't been an award decision communicated yet. More timelines confirmed.
The question I have, the term probation, is that a? What exactly does probation mean? Does that mean just starting note, you know, kind of, uh, you know?
With, with all of our firefighters, they have to meet minimum stat, training standards to provide external fire attack operations. Um, so probation, probationary members are those members that don't yet meet those standards and can't provide the full service that our other 28 active members can.
Any questions? Okay, see none. Can I have a motion to adjourn the order? Uh, we have following this meeting in June 20th. All that is being the closest public pursuant to the community charter to discuss new municipal service under sections of zero, one, E and K. Is that right?
Ninety. Start the typo.
Oh, okay.
Ninety-one, B and K.
All right. And further that, all the persons of the mayor, council, pertinent staff excluded from the, in that motion. Second. All there. Have a motion to adjourn the regular.
Move that.
Second.
All there. Okay, so over to, over to me. Want to go?
And we're not recording right now, right?